Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the Thursday, March 18th, regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. I ask you now to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Agenda item 2.3, the observance of the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by myself. Ask you all to join me now in observance of the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship. Agenda item 2.5, attendance, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mrs. Parrish?
Present.
Mrs. Schumate?
Present.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillich?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Reverend Patillo?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 2.6, consideration of the agenda for March 18th, 2021. You should have the agenda before you abort, rocks. I will now accept the motion at this time.
Move for approval, Atkinson.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson, second by Mr. Tillich, as there is any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda item is 3.1, closed session. This is for consideration of a transaction report for current and past employees. Just before we go, do board members have any need to go into closed session for consideration of that report?
No.
No, Atkinson.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman. I did have a couple personnel questions. It wasn't necessarily about the transaction.
Okay. All right, we'll now ask that Vice Chair Atkinson would now make a motion to move us into closed session.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of subsection 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection A dot one.
Second, Hans.
Motion is made, a second by Ms. Hines. If there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. We'll now move this meeting to closed session.
All right, folks, stand by. We're moving you in at this time. Coming out of closed session, folks.
Thank you. I move that each board member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and which were identified in the motion to go into closed session were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Second, Hans.
Motion was made by Ms. Atkinson, second by Ms. Hines. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1, public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1, discussion of public comment on board agenda items. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you. Agenda item 5.1 through 5.5 is consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion on a consent agenda, does any board member want to have anything pulled from that consent agenda at this time? Mr. Parrish?
The only question I have, and I think consent agendas are great, so it does say time, but one of the things that has been bothering me is that these resolutions, although their school is not in session, it would be nice if these resolutions, especially Public School Volunteer Week and School Library Month, if they could be read for the public, because we approve them, they're not read, and they're sent to the school, and nobody knows anything about it. I just wish that when we do the consent agendas, especially resolutions, that they are at least read in public. That's just my two bits. Thank you.
Yeah, I do, they are loaded in board notes, correct? Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if the board members want to have it pulled from consent agenda, we can do that. That's not a problem. When I have that pull, we can pull that now and have them read. Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. I did want to ask a couple questions about the budget report, if that's available. I don't know if we talk about it before we vote on it, or how you want to do that.
We could entertain a motion a second and then have discussion on it.
Okay.
At that time.
So it would come out of the consent agenda piece?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to have it come out of the consent agenda, just so we can discuss it.
All right.
So are we making a motion to remove 5.1? Just based on what I'm hearing, I make a motion to remove 5.1 and 5.5 from the consent agenda?
5.1 and 5.2 and 5.5, three of them.
5.1, I'm sorry, let me redo it. So I move that we remove 5.1, 5.2, and 5.5 from the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, made by Ms. Atkinson. Second made by Ms. Hines. Any discussion on that before we vote? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, so we will vote on these items individually, but just for clarification, we didn't have to have a public vote, because we were voting to amend the agenda that was already voted approved on. So that's why we had a public vote on this at that time. So agenda item 5.1 is a resolution for Public School Volunteer Week. Dr. Kramar, I know you was not prepared to read. You have that with you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am ready.
Thank you, sir.
All right. As the chair, Ms. Chairman mentioned, and Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, the first resolution deals with Public Volunteer Week. Whereas our school volunteers and partners in education are great mainstays in helping us achieve and maintain our shared goal of making the public schools of Portsmouth the very best they are, and whereas they generously share their outstanding talents and unique abilities in the schools and are making lasting contributions to the education of young people of our great city, our Commonwealth, and our great nation, and whereas on a daily basis concerned citizens continue to augment the efforts of school personnel by contributing freely of their time, talents, and resources to advance the cause of public education here in our fair city, and whereas their diligence and their exemplary service can ever be a model for all who aspire to contribute to the Commonwealth, now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board extend its heartfelt appreciation and enormous gratitude to the citizenry of Portsmouth and to all volunteers and partners in education for their perseverance, zeal, and their many hours of endeavor rendered on behalf of the youth of this historic Seaport City. And be it further resolved that all school division personnel be encouraged to observe Public School Volunteer Week during the period of April 19th through the 23rd of 2021 as a tangible means of demonstrating our profound gratitude to this fine group of individuals and organizations for their invaluable contribution. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be archived as part of this body's official minutes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Hans or Tillich?
Oh, I'm sorry, seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 5.2, resolution for School Library Month. Dr. Kramar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas April 2021 has been designated the 36th Annual National School Library Month, and whereas school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge, and whereas school libraries provide materials that will develop literacy, cultural, aesthetic appreciation, and ethical standards, and whereas school libraries provide materials which reflect the ideas and beliefs of religious, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups and their contributions to America and the world, and whereas school libraries provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure, and whereas school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served, and whereas school libraries are fun places for students to go, and all students deserve a well-managed library to provide for free expression and access to ideas, now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board and the Division Superintendent of Portsmouth Public Schools declare the month of April 2021 School Library Month, and thereby urge each of the Portsmouth schools to adopt a similar resolution.
Move for approval.
Thank you, sir. Motion made by Mr. Parrish.
Second. Thomas.
Second by Ms. Thomas. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. I will ask for entertaining a motion now for the consent agenda items 5.3 and 5.4 at this time.
Move for approval.
Second, Hans.
Motion made by Mr. Parrish, second by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Palmer?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you so much. Agenda item 5.5, the budget report for February 2021. I'll entertain a motion, and then we ask for discussion.
Move for approval. Schumate?
Tillich.
Motion made by Ms. Schumate, second by Mr. Tillich, and discussion, Ms. Hines.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good evening. My question is a very generic question, it's not very specific. I'm looking at our burn rate, and I'm looking at our amount spent, and my question is really, do we have a plan for what funds we're going to have left over at the end of the year? What is our spending, what is our spending down plan? Are we able to take some of these savings that we're going to see this year? Because we are going to see some savings this year, simply because we didn't run transportation, or we haven't had to keep our buildings as warm or as cool, because there's limited number of people in there. And so just looking at our burn rate and just estimating what our savings are. Do we have, have we looked at what our plan is going to be for the funds that we are not going to burn through? As of this point in this year, we are projecting our burn not to be where it has been historically. So being somebody who has been on this board, and we have fought for reappropriation, and we have done all of that, I would like to know where we are with planning for the lack of burn rate that we have.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Bracy. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Hines. We do, we're planning. I think the first thing that we have to do first, if you recall, the city is appropriating us quarterly. In this year, normally they appropriate all of the funding at the beginning of the year, but because of COVID, they had decided to appropriate us on a quarterly basis. We have our last quarter appropriation going to city council next Tuesday. So the first thing we need to make sure of is that we are allocated the entire amount of funds that we were promised for this year. And you are correct, at this point, our burn rate does look a lot better than what it would in normal years. So we have started some preliminary planning for items that we would spend, obviously one-time items, because we don't want to put anything that would be recurring in funds that are excess, and then we wouldn't have them going forward. But in that regard, yes, we are looking at some items that we can use some of these funding for. We also have to keep in mind, at the state level, there may be some state shortfalls in relation to, say, for example, enrollments, and for some changes with things like special education. I'll give you a good example. The Special Ed Regional Tuition Program has underwent a major shift, where normally the state was funding about 40 school divisions. They are now funding 132. But they haven't expanded the revenue pot for that. So we have to keep a close watch on that revenue of what we're going to receive, because it was, it's been different from what they've estimated. So while the burn rate does look like that it is a gap, and it's larger as it should be, because we're saving on utilities and fuel, there are also some areas on the revenue side that we have to keep a watch on to ensure that the revenue comes in to balance what expenditures we have already in the budget. So yes, we are working on a plan. It will mostly be a lot of non-recurring items and things that we probably looked at in budgets past that we haven't been able to fund due to the lack of funding for that.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is going to be more for Dr. Bracy. With the burn rate and with this money that we don't want to spend, you know, we don't want to put that recurring bill in, because we know that we're not, we, you know, we probably won't have this low of a burn rate. I would like to see if maybe we could do some sort of bonus pay at the end of the year as a one-time stipend to our staff out of this one-time money. And so I wanted to ask that question, and I don't need a response at this point, but if we're going to look at non-recurring expenses, I would at least like for us to consider a bonus that may come out of this fund. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if I'm not mistaken, it's normally around the 1st of April that the Finance Committee will start discussing the burn rate and appropriation plans as well. So hopefully we can get something from them once they meet and talk about it as well. Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions in reference to agenda item 5.5? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 6.1, Student Representative Report. Mr. Miles Hunt, thank you, sir, for your patience and perseverance and being with us on tonight.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, and School Board members. My last report, I had the chance to virtually visit students at Churchland Middle School, the career explorations and keyboarding courses. While there, I informed the learners about a career plan, the things that you should consider when beginning to determine what profession you wish to enter. A few key aspects that anyone should consider when pondering about an occupation, focusing on your passion, doing what you want to do, not what others expect of you, or not what others want you to do, making an impact, and not only creating a to-do list, but also a to-be list. It is important to remind the youth of today that their dreams, their hopes, and their aspirations can absolutely become a reality, not suddenly or by magic, but by putting in the work that is required and by achieving the goals that they set for themselves, both in the short term and the long term. I'm pleased to have sat down with Drip TV, which is a youth show organized by students at IC Norfolk High School. Great to speak with Ms. Painter, the television productions teacher, about my role as a student representative, among other topics. You can find their content by searching Drip TV on Instagram or YouTube. Last month, I was invited to speak at an ed equity webinar hosted by the Virginia Department of Education. We discussed schools as racial justice engines, which incorporates trauma-informed care for racial trauma and strategies to support the unique needs of Black students in schools. It was an enjoyable panel, and I encourage you to watch it on the Videoe's YouTube page. Yesterday, I went before the Virginia Board of Education, outlined the recommendations made by ASAC, the African-American Super Tenor Advisory Council. To be more specific, I laid out the data concerning exclusionary discipline practices, the underrepresentation of Black students in gifted education, and the disproportionate racial composition of Virginia's teacher workforce. Workforce, excuse me. While we continue to navigate this uncharted pathway, I want to leave students with this quote by an American writer, William Bud. "Study while others are sleeping, work while others are loafing, prepare while others are playing and dreaming while others are wishing." As always, students and the community members can follow us on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook at EPS Student Rep to stay connected. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Excellent report. Okay, we got Ms. Hines and then Vice Chair Atkinson.
Miles, thank you. I wanted to thank you for your excellent report and the conversations with students about finding their destiny and doing what they wanted to do. I had a student today that said, "Hans, I need to talk to you after school today." And we had that exact conversation. So that is the conversation that needs to be happening, and so I'm glad you were there for those students to do that. So thank you. And I also wanted to congratulate you. You did win the Harry F. Bird Scholarship Award, if I'm not mistaken, and so I wanted to give you a congratulations for that as well, because this is, this is the award season, my friend. So congratulations, and from all, you know, from the board, I'm speaking as one person, but seeing the response of the board, congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Hines, and thank you, everyone, for your congratulations and well wishes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Atkinson.
That's exactly what I was going to say. I was just going to say, could we give a virtual round of applause for Miles for earning the Harry F. Bird Scholarship? You know, that's a $15,000 award, so congratulations. And can we all just virtually clap for him?
Thank you all once again.
Thank you so much again, Miles. And also, I want to thank you just for your effort in the work of battling against problems of equity and disparity within the state in the school division. You're actually leading us as a board, and your action in doing that, and we're trying to catch up with you in our battle against, for equity and against disparities as well. So thank you so much. Agenda item 6.2, Monthly Report, Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Anita Nguyen. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. March is an exciting month, because we have many celebrations throughout the month. As you know from your board reports, we had a National Council of Teachers of English African-American Read-In at IC Norfolk High School, and we had our Churchill High School Drama Students participating in activities. And we also had our Notorious Read Across America Day, which many of you participated in. March is also the month of music in our schools. And this month, we're showcasing our music. As you know, under the leadership of Ms. Gwen Jenkins, our students are always stellar, and tonight, we have a wonderful performance here for you. Mr. Schlepper, you can let it roll.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board, Dr. Bracy and staff. For more than 30 years, March has been officially designated by the National Association for Music Education for the Observance of Music in Our Schools Month. The purpose of Music in Our Schools Month is to raise awareness of the importance of music education in our country by calling special attention to the benefits that it brings to people of all ages. This year's theme is "Music: The Sound of My Heart." When one thinks of the physical heart, the beating and pumping action of it may come to mind. When one thinks of heart from a soulful perspective, however, that part of a human being that controls desires, emotions, dreams, and conscience steps to the forefront. At our school division, music serves as an important means of expression for our students. Students are provided a channel through which they can convey personal feelings, ranging from quiet reflection to exuberant praise and worship. Involvement in music classes and experiences affords them a wholesome way to connect and communicate with other people while enjoying a camaraderie that often is not available in other disciplines. I am most pleased to share in this video how Portsmouth Public Schools' music educators are addressing their discipline as related to its students in this most trying of times. The old English proverb, "Necessity is the mother of invention," is quite applicable to the team's response to teaching the whole child. The concept of an ensemble of music educators with all members pulling in the same direction at the same time is a reality. The teachers have become more team-minded, more creative, more flexible, and above all, more people-sensitive. This ensemble of educators... This ensemble of educators has come to the conclusion that virtual avenues are never the preferred method of making music. But in the absence of viable alternatives, it has dared to focus on the positive possibilities without ignoring the negative byproducts. The words of the famous philosopher Plato summarizes it best. "Music gives a soul to the universe, wings to the mind, flight to the imagination, and life to everything." A picture is worth a thousand words. With that said, please listen to and view samples of our students' current virtual school music experiences. These samples are the results of many hours of teacher team planning and professional development.
Portsmouth Public Schools shining bright together, learning, growing in brighter stormy weather. Portsmouth Public Schools, we're in this together, joining hand in hand to make our world much better. Join with us on this exciting journey around the world and home again. We're still learning, starting each day, excited 'cause we're growing, united, and we are one. Portsmouth Public Schools shining bright together, where we excel, creative, we're go-getters. Portsmouth Public Schools shining bright together, oh, how we love you. Oh, how we love you.
Wow. Just want to say thank you to Mrs. Jenkins and all of our wonderful students, and let's give them a virtual applause. Thank you so, so much. This concludes our report, and I hope that you all feel as good as I do after seeing that wonderful performance.
Yeah, I, I really do. I wanted, uh, to say thank you to Ms. Jenkins, and thank you for reminding us all of why we're, we're here tonight. And the real reason why we're here, and that's our children and, uh, to see the joy on their faces and to see how hard you all are still working, uh, even in this virtual, uh, this virtual basis. And music is so important, uh, to students. Um, students like me who weren't very athletic at school and who were introverts, uh, music played a big, a big part in our lives. And I think, uh, it was Mozart that said that music is not, was in the notes, but the silence in between. And, and that, that gives us the opportunity to really reflect. And music brings out the, the best thinkers, I believe. So thank you. And to show my appreciation for you teaching me in the eighth grade, I want to render my version of "I'm But a Small Voice." I'm just kidding. Uh, Ms. Schumake and then Ms. Hines. But thank you again, seriously, Ms. Jenkins. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Patillo. And I was about to say the exact same thing. Um, Ms. Jenkins, I just want to say thank you for all that you have done in the past and what you are currently doing. Um, I remember you from Waters. And, um, you had me, as well as two other people, to perform Dreamgirls. But before we did that, you said, "I want you guys to, um, look into who were part of this song and who were the Supremes." And so we had to come back and let you know who they were before we actually performed it in, in front of the entire school. And I just wanted to say, you know, thank you. You are a pillar in the educational community as well as the musical community. Um, if I'm not mistaken, I saw Ms., uh, it might have been Mr. Tavon, um, from Churchland High School. He plays the piano. And I'm gonna tell you how I met him. I was there for a conference for my daughter, and I kept hearing someone play the piano. And I was like, "Who is that?" So I go into the next room, and he started to play all of these different songs. And I said, "You know, did, did you have someone to teach you?" And he said, "Well, I actually just learned by hearing." And then I learned the notes. And, um, what I did, I recorded him, and then I put it on, uh, Instagram. And I don't know if you're familiar with Chloe Flower, the pianist. She actually reshared it, and he was so psyched. And it was, it was so exciting. Um, but I just know what you're doing. I know what you have done for me musically over the years. And I just want to say thank you for all that you have continued to do, and you are absolutely spectacular.
Thank you, Ms. Schumake, uh, Ms. Hines.
It's gonna come out Ms. Taylor, because that's how I know Ms. Jenkins is Ms. Taylor. Um, and like Chairman and like, uh, Ms. Schumake, it was Waters Middle School for both years there. She had us singing and dancing on that stage, and she gave us such confidence that we could go out and take on the world. So I'm, I'm sorry, but I miss kids, and it's just an emotional week because I've had kids come back this weekend. So seeing what our kids can do, even in this situation, is wonderful. So I want to thank you and your team for what you've done. Um, I'm excited for what my child will be able to do through Portsmouth Public Schools' music. Um, so that he gets, you know, some of the same that I got and what you have done for our kids and what you continue to do. I just want to say thank you. But it was wonderful to see kids. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hines. Do we have any other remarks for Ms. Jenkins at this time?
Chairman Patillo, I do. I have my hand up. This is Board Member Thomas.
Oh, Ms. Thomas, I'm sorry. I couldn't see.
Yeah, I couldn't miss the opportunity to say thank yous also to Ms. Jenkins and echo what everyone says, like, she's the best. I mean, Ms. Jenkins, you already know, you're, you're the best. You have a gift. You have a gift like no other. You have a love like no other. And I echo what everyone says. You know, you, you already know. I don't even have the words, but even the pictures of Mr. Jenkins doing the weekend instrument repair, it just speaks to the dedication of the entire music staff and the choir. I mean, that was beautiful, just beautiful. So I just want to say thank you for, for just sharing that and for the children that participated. They were just excellent. And to keep going and music is, is just, is such a joy. Um, and, yeah, it's just such a joy. And thank you for sharing that, your gift with, um, with Portsmouth Public Schools.
Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Hines.
All right, I'll keep it together this time, I promise. Um, but I, I want Mr. Jenkins to know, um, his Wilson High School band is, is being missed by the neighborhood. Um, and so it, it's just, it, it just so happenstance, I put on my Special Forces shirt for tonight, uh, just because I wanted something different than Portsmouth Public Schools, and I wanted to support my Wilson. Um, but in my afternoon walks, when I get home with the dog on these nice days, you know, in the spring, is really when the band gets to go outside and start practicing. And whether they're good or bad, it doesn't matter. We enjoy hearing it. And so I've had some neighbors stop me and say, "When are the kids coming back? Are the kids gonna be, are we gonna hear the band this year? Are we gonna hear the band this year?" Um, so I'm sure it's, it's that way at all the high schools. You know, we're missing the sounds of being in school, but just very specifically because I'm in the, um, near Wilson. Um, we, uh, the neighborhood has missed them. So we're looking forward um, to Mr. Jenkins and his, um, and his marching band. It may not be the Special Forces anymore. I'm not sure what it'll be next. Um, but I'm sure it'll be wonderful. But just know that we're missing, we're missing the sounds of our schools right now.
Thank you so much. Thank you again, Ms. Jenkins and Dr. Nguyen, uh, for your reports on this evening. Agenda Item 6.3 is discussion item on the disparity study update. Uh, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chair Patillo. I, I gotta remember where I was after listening to all of that. I've, I've, I've lost track of, um, time and the agenda and, and everything. But great job, Mrs. Jenkins and Dr. Nguyen for bringing that to us, uh, this evening. Item 6.3, Discussion of the Disparity Study Update. Uh, Mr. Falk is gonna give a, an update of where we are, um, on this. And then what he, what you will learn is that there will be a, a full report, um, given. Mr. Falk, if you want to go ahead and chime in now?
Yes, sir. Good evening again. Um, we've been diligently working with, uh, the representatives from Miller Three Consulting, who is the firm that was selected to, uh, provide the disparity study report to, uh, the school board. Within the next two weeks, we, we would have a meeting, uh, with Miller Three's representatives, and they'll provide an overview of the report to the Minority Contractors Business Policy Committee of the School Board, along with Dr. Bracy, myself, and procurement staff members. And then after that meeting, the plan is that we'll process any feedback from, from that meeting, and we'll prepare to present, uh, the final disparity study report at one of the meetings in, in April, uh, once we get all of that, um, taken care of and, and processed and reviewed. So that is conclusion of report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if any.
Board members have any questions for Mr. Falk at this time? Thank you so much. And, and Mr. Falk, if you can, and Dr. Bracy can continue to, to work with the Committee on Equity Inclusion, Dr. Whitaker and Ms., Mr. Parent, that, that all really, uh, flows, uh, together. So if we could do that, that'd be great. Thank you. Agenda Item 6.4, Discussion Item, Return to In-Person Learning Update. Uh, Dr. Bracy.
All right.
Now, Dr. Bracy, do you have slides for tonight for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I just asked if the board members could, uh, hold any questions until Dr. Bracy finishes his slide presentation.
Okay. And they, and, and they can follow along. It's, it's, it's in, um, it's in their, uh, board docs as well.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you, um, Chair, uh, Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, and members of the board. Tonight, we're gonna be presenting an update to the school reopening plan. Uh, as you will see throughout our presentation, the structure of the reopening plan is very much intact. from what the board approved two weeks ago. However, in that time, we've taken into account feedback that we've received from staff and parents. We also have identified some minor hurdles as we began mapping out our plan of action. So, tonight, we will share some of the slight adjustments we've made. But overall, we remain steady with the work and preparations for our students that will arrive on April 12th. Tonight's presentation will begin with Dr. Nguyen, where she will give you the latest information and developments from our Department of Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Nguyen, you take it away from here.
Good evening again, everyone. The Office of Curriculum and Instruction has been working diligently to prepare for our students and staff to return to in-person learning. Tonight's presentation is just an overview of some of the key issues that have come about through feedback from teachers and staff and of course, from the board and from our community. Mr. Schleffer, next slide, please. In response to childcare, Alphabet has rolled out a phenomenal plan to provide childcare. The fees are contingent upon the type of care needed and they seem to have opportunities for everyone who needs various types of childcare. The registration process began on March 15th for staff and for PPS families on March 17th. They are beginning with four sites at Churchill Academy, Churchill Primary Park View and Simon's Dale. And they're eventually hoping to open all sites except Douglas Park and Brighton because the low attendance that they've had there in the past has not, has not allowed them to do that. However, if they get the enrollment there, they're willing to open those sites as well. I want to report to you that right now enrollment is slightly low. As of today, Alphabet is reporting that we have 15 staff members who have asked for enrollment. One at Churchill Primary, eight at Parkview, six at Simon's Dale. And we have 18 families who are requesting childcare. And as a result of this, they are asking us to make sure that everyone knows about this. We have launched it on social media. They sent requests from, from schools. We're making announcements daily. There are flyers about. But we want parents to know that enrollment is still open, that staff, staff to know that enrollment is still open and that they are taking subsidies and that they will work with families to enroll their children. So, they're on target and we're hoping that we can get the enrollment because they did indicate that they will need at least 15 children per site to open up a site. If they don't have 15 in a site, they would have to combine those children and perhaps open up one site where families would have to drop off there. So, we are hoping that enrollment will continue to grow with our before and after school program and also with our AFWAC Academy. Next slide. We're also working to make sure that we provide staff the support that they need as we launch this new level of instruction. Each school has developed a task force focused on supporting the return to in-person instruction. And this includes a teacher, a nurse, parents and administrator who come together and try to create ways to make sure that we can address the needs and provide resources for each of our individual schools. They are working on protocols such as how students will move about in the hallways, how teachers will have arrival and departure times and making sure that they're doing everything to make sure everyone has a smooth transition and they have a safe return. We're also providing guided support and professional development sessions for instruction. And many of those, many people have participated in those in the last week. And with those sessions, we've launched a Google form, which enables teachers to provide questions and receive feedback for those questions. We have two more videos that will be going out, one of which you will get to view this week, tonight. And those teachers will have the opportunity to respond to those as well. Our administrators are working on a schedule for duty-free lunch for our staff, for our teachers who are teaching in person. And the teachers, I'm, the principals are meeting with me weekly to provide input and feedback and to receive support and to give us information around the resources that they need within their schools and for their staff. So, we have a very transparent process with them and we are making sure that they understand we are here to support them from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction and the other offices throughout the division. Next slide, please.
One second, Dr. Nguyen. I've gotta reshare the screen. One moment.
Okay.
I'm sorry. All right, here we go.
Next slide. Thank you. Last week, we launched our professional development to help staff understand what the instruction would look like when teachers teach face-to-face and Zoom at the same time. The technology resource teachers began this professional development on Monday, March 15th. For those who wanted to volunteer early to come in, and we had an overwhelming response of teachers across the division, elementary teachers who participated in that. And in addition to that, Ms. Jennifer Thomas did a special session for principals so that they too could understand the process. The train, this training will continue and it will be required during the week of March 29th for those who have not yet taken advantage of it. So that when teachers return to the building, they will have a full understanding of this. And our technology resource teachers will be on-site to provide assistance to teachers in their buildings. And tonight, we wanted you to see the training so that you too would have a full understanding and it would help you visualize what this will look like. And thanks to Ms. Thomas for this phenomenal video.
Hello, PPS teachers and staff. The purpose of this week's video is to help you understand how you can deliver virtual and hybrid instruction from your classroom using PPS technology. We know that teachers and staff will be returning to the buildings on March 29th and that our pre-K to sixth students will be returning to the classroom on April 12th, while we will also be delivering virtual instruction. We're gonna walk you through a couple scenarios to help you better understand what this process will look like. We will highlight three scenarios that allow teachers to deliver virtual instruction from the classroom. This can be in either a full virtual mode or a hybrid mode. Option one is using your PPS laptop to conduct Zoom sessions similar to what you've been doing all year. Option two uses the BenQ or interactive board in the classroom to conduct Zoom sessions. Each BenQ board does have a camera attached. And option three is using both the teacher laptop and the BenQ board together to Zoom. This allows you to have a cohesive classroom and gives you the experience of dual monitors. Now, let's look at each of these individually. But remember, this is just an overview and your building TRT will conduct hands-on training with you during the month of March. Option one is using your PPS laptop to Zoom with students. Keep in mind, students in the classroom and at home will both have access to their Chromebooks in order to join live instruction. Using your laptop to Zoom with students at home is the same process whether you are at home or in your classroom. If you are teaching in a hybrid model and have students in the classroom, we highly recommend establishing an area in the front of the classroom that allows you to be front and center with both online and in-person students. Option two is using the BenQ interactive panel to Zoom from your classroom. This is really no different than using your laptop to Zoom with students. The BenQ and interactive panels in the classroom have been equipped with webcams, so they will be able to Zoom. There's no additional setup needed. BenQ panels also allow students to see each other at home and in the classroom. BenQ panels make it easy for the teachers to use the Zoom whiteboard for drawing during interactive lessons. This is really a larger monitor for students and teachers to be able to use during their Zoom sessions. Option three is the most effective method in that it utilizes both the laptop and the BenQ or interactive panel. This is the most effective because it actually replicates using a dual monitor. Teachers can be a host on one device and a co-host on the other device. The second device, which could be the panel, can really serve as a second monitor so that you can see the students at home and your kids in the classroom can also see students at home. Teachers can move seamlessly from the laptop and the panel while utilizing resources such as NearPod, Google Documents and other activities and resources located within Clavos. The TRT will be working with teachers throughout the month of March to help you get comfortable with this process. So, just to review, there's three options, using your laptop, using the BenQ or using them together to deliver Zoom instruction. Students in the classroom and at home can participate in live instruction simultaneously. TRTs will hold trainings to help walk you through this process. And remember, there's no technical setup required. You can do this, teachers. We have confidence in you and we are here to help.
Thank you. I want to also mention that one of the reasons we can do this is because that we are very fortunate and that we have interactive panels in all of our classrooms and all of our students and teachers have devices. We have the technology to do this and this is going to be a phenomenal opportunity for, for us to take instruction to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for that presentation. Next, we'll get an update from our auxiliary services from Dr. Simmons.
Good evening, Chair Pillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board, Dr. Bracy. Based on conversations from our last meeting and based on questions that we received and input from our staff, we've made some adjustments as well in auxiliary services and we'd like to share those with you tonight. Next slide. We too in auxiliary services have set up teams and so our teams have gone out. Members of Transportation, Food Service and Building Services have met with each individual principal at the school level, pre-K, elementary. Those meetings have taken place in the past, two weeks since the last board meeting. And so, the principals were very complimentary of us coming out to meet one-on-one with each principal to go over plans as to how the kids will unload on buses, how they'll move through the hallway, how the schools have been set up in terms of social distancing, all of the measures we have in place to try to keep everybody safe. And so, we've conducted those in the last couple of weeks. PPE has been delivered to all of the pre-K and elementary schools. And so, we have the sign-off seats where principals have signed for the receipt of their PPE and will start moving PPE delivery into all of our other buildings beginning tomorrow. And so, we plan to complete that next week because we do realize with all of our staff coming back, all schools should have a delivery of PPE for our staff. And certainly, all buildings will have a certain amount of students in them, even middle and high schools. And so, we look to complete that next week. Next slide. We've changed our deep cleaning and disinfectant schedule for the public. If you remember, we were with our DDT and we were on a every-three-night schedule. We've changed that now and so, beginning on March 29th, our schools and all of our buses would be deep cleaned every evening. And so, we've worked hard to develop a schedule where some of the deep cleaning and disinfectant will move over to our custodial side. They will, they've been trained in the use of all of the equipment and machines that we've ordered in terms of deep cleaning. We recognize that this is a very important process in terms of making sure our buildings are sanitized and deep cleaned every afternoon. And so, we've sent that plan to senior leadership, just waiting to get word. And so, hopefully, that plan will be approved from senior leadership and we'll get that out to all of the principals, all of the building-level coordinators throughout the division so that everyone understands at the end of every evening, every building, every night will be deep cleaned and sanitized. And every school bus, every afternoon, at the end of the day, will be, be deep cleaned and sanitized. And so, went back to the drawing board to develop a, a new schedule as it relates to deep cleaning. Sneeze guards have arrived and so, we have some classrooms already set up. I was at Lakeview today and so, some of those classrooms are beginning to be set up and we have the sneeze guards on the desk as an extra layer of protection as well. Based on the feedback we received, we decided to move lunches to the cafeteria. And so, we're in the process now setting up each school's cafeteria with six feet social distancing, where the students will sit and eat lunch in the cafeteria, braffles where we still remain on the grab-and-go and be eating inside the classrooms. Next slide.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Simmons. This is Durin, HR Updates.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Dean, you can move forward to the next slide. Thank you. ADA accommodation requests. HR has received approximately seven accommodation requests from staff members and we are currently conducting an interactive dialogue with the employee and their physician in order to try to find accommodations that will best serve the employee as well as the students. We, that comprises of 3.4% of our full-time employees. Next slide. Daily substitute teachers will be available again beginning on March 29th, once teachers return to the building. Currently, we have a pool of substitute teachers that includes 310 active substitutes. And there was an additional session that was held today to onboard a group of substitutes who can begin when teachers return back to the buildings. Next slide. We are working hard with transportation to try to fill our vacancies. We do currently have 34 driver vacancies and seven monitor vacancies. There is a upcoming job fair to be held on April the 22nd, where we will be recruiting for bus drivers. We offer the training to be able to earn the CDL. And we're very excited also to be offering referral incentives and hiring incentives as well for new employees. So, hopefully, that will be, help us in filling those vacancies that currently exist. Next slide. We are launching a COVID-19 dashboard. The dashboard will include a count of positive student cases by location as well as a count of positive staff cases by location and the date that the positive case is reported to that particular location. Certainly, we can't provide specifics with names, but we will include numbers and it will be in ongoing tally of, of the number of cases. And we plan to launch that on April 12th, when students return to the building. That will be on our website. Next slide. Just to go over some of the workplace mitigation strategies that we are expecting staff to abide by. We are asking that all staff self-monitor for COVID symptoms before they come to work each day and that they report any symptoms to their supervisor if they feel that they are ill and then not report to work. We are requiring that all staff and visitors wear masks and we have those to provide to them in the case that they are unable to provide them on their own as Dr. Simmons just indicated. We are also requiring that staff maintain social distancing, especially when there's no mask present and that would be during mealtime. There have been instances where we have discovered in the last year of COVID where people forget that while you usually would spend time commiserating with your colleagues during mealtime, you want to make sure that you continue to distance during that time so that you're not exposed to the virus. We are encouraging supervisors and principals to hold meetings virtually as much as possible so that we don't have large groups and gatherings in a small space. And we are also committing to making regular announcements and reminders about our sanitation schedule, reminders to wear masks and to continue with social distancing practices. Next slide, please. Our partnership with the Portsmouth Health Department has been great and I'm happy to be able to announce to you tonight that the Portsmouth Health be able to announce to you tonight that the Portsmouth Health Department has committed to hiring a full-time epidemiologist and two contact tracers. And these staff members would be assigned to work solely with Portsmouth Public Schools in assisting us with contact tracing and identifying sources of COVID-19 should we have any instances that occur within the school division. One of those contact tracers will be assigned to work with staff members and then the other contact tracer will be assigned to work with any families and students who may have positive COVID tests. They would be responsible for notifying anyone who is exposed to staff or students through the contact tracing. And then the school division would notify other people who may have a possible exposure. Also, the Health Department is working to provide rapid testing to our school nurses where if a staff member came to the nurse and indicated that they wanted to do a COVID test, we could do that on-site. If someone is exhibiting symptoms or they're not feeling well, we certainly are getting our nurses trained so that they can administer those quick tests and have results within 15 minutes on-site. Next slide. Thank you.
All right. Should I jump right in, Dr. Bracy?
Right ahead, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Chair Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, board members and virtual guests. This evening, I'd like to just give you a highlight of some of the preparations that the IT office have made in support of both in-person and virtual learning. First of all, teacher laptops. In mid-October, we began the process of distributing new laptops for our elementary and middle school teachers. This was a scheduled refresh of their equipment and we were fortunate enough to get ahead of the demand and purchase the necessary tools that were needed for our ever-changing environment. Webcams were installed, as Jennifer said, on interactive panels. She demonstrated, as you saw in the pictures. These webcams, as she said, offers that flexibility in the classroom for our teachers and will benefit both in-person and virtual students. We've also been sweeping each of the buildings to verify technology or the functionality of our equipment. Our networks have been, well, quote-unquote, asleep for some, for the past year. And, you know, we'll be performing tests and activities to ensure that they're awake and ready. These actions will include, but are not necessarily limited to, testing those interactive panels, making sure they're up to date for firmware, software, things of that nature. Also, every interactive panel has a PC attached to it so they can function on their own as well. So that PC, we want to make sure that they're up to date and ready to go. Classroom labs, classroom PCs and labs, we'll be verifying those devices as well, making sure they're up to date and ready. And then all the network components, both wired and wireless. We're going to be restarting all of the equipment in our network closets so that our access points will reconnect to those devices in the closet just to make sure that we don't have any issues with those. It's just a proactive measure. We want to make sure everything is up and running. Now, in order to prepare for the return of our staff, our technology support team, or as we call them, our technology support specialists are working with building administration so we can piggyback on the schedules for training and other return-to-school activities. We work closely with the TRTs to make sure we're there when they're doing their training so we can also work with our teachers and their technology to make sure that it's functioning as it should. This way, we can, as I said, work with those returning teachers to ensure a smooth operation throughout the instructional day. I didn't mean to go back that far, sorry. Trying to do multiple things at one time here. So student devices and support. Our technology call center operates Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30. We've seen a lot of activity through our technology call center and we'll continue to provide this support to our students and families. The call center software has allowed us, or the new software that we've purchased, has allowed us to work more efficiently and it greatly improved the experience for those that reach out for assistance. For example, if you call the call center, you're told what number you are in queue. And if you wish, you can leave a name and a number and we'll call you back while you retain your place in queue. It's a great time saver for our families and greatly increases our opportunities to serve everyone in a timely manner. We're also scheduled to deliver Chromebook carts to our schools. All of our schools are going to receive additional Chromebook carts. The deliveries are March 29th and 30th. We're going to need additional devices in our buildings for situations where we need to, where a student might bring a device in that's not charged or it's not functioning. This way, they can, they can continue on with the instructional day and really have no lapse in the instructional day. So those, again, those Chromebooks will be delivered the 29th and the 30th. And then we also, in looking forward, we've got another, another set of Chromebooks on order to replace our aging fleet. That's another 6,100 Chromebooks that we'll be bringing in, looking towards the summer, fall, and getting those Chromebooks swapped out so that our kids have the latest equipment available. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
As we conclude this presentation, I do want to thank our staff and administrative teams who've worked tirelessly on making our reopening as successful as possible. I also specifically want to thank our parents and families who have been so flexible with us and have been a crucial partner as we've been working our way back to reopening schools. This has been a difficult time, but we see the light on the horizon and we're ready to move forward and continue to shine brighter together. We're happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
All right. And before we open for questions, I also want to thank Dr. Bracy and your team for responding to the board and, board members, he sent about six pages worth of questions and answers to you early this afternoon in response to staff questions and questions you all had as well. So I want to thank him and his team for taking the time to do that and also Lauren for all your help in communicating things out to the public and to the board as well. So we may entertain questions at this time, board members.
Chairman Patillo?
Yes, Mr. Parent.
Just wanted to say to Dr. Bracy and his staff, what an outstanding report. One of the things I want, I am very curious about something. Dr. Simmons, what are sneeze guards? Are they plexiglass in front of the desk or is it, is that what that is? Because I haven't heard that. I'm dealing with a mask all day long, you know, I have to wear the mask. But sneeze guard, I've never heard that. So you have to educate me on that.
Yes, sir. Each student desk will have a plexiglass barrier for the student in terms of, so we've ordered them and so we know the social distance metrics for each classroom. And so as I was in classrooms today, we know exactly, you know, how many desks that we can get six feet apart. But we also own those desks. When you walk in, every desk will have a protective barrier for the student in terms of, because we know for breakfast, there's still a concern that if they eat in the classroom, they take medicine. But that protective barrier will be there for every student desk that is inside the classrooms at the pre-K elementary level.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Chair. I do want to thank you guys for giving us the update. It seems, it seems comprehensive. It seems well thought out. Now that there's a plan in place, you guys are able to plan according to what the plan is. And I understand that before there was a plan, it was hard to plan for what the plan was going to be. I mean, we could have come up with 15 different plans. So I want to thank you guys for working diligently once the plan's in place. You guys have, you guys have answered a lot of questions and have put a lot of things to rest. But I do have a couple of questions and I'm just going to go in the order in which they appeared because that's the order in which they're in my sheet. So, Dr. Simmons, when we talk about lunches at the elementary level, I know that usually there is, you know, the table cleaner, you know, like there's duties assigned in an elementary classroom. Excuse me. So can you walk me through how the lunch tables are going to be cleaned? Are the kids going to be allowed to do the cleaning? How is that going to work? Because that's going to feel different for an elementary classroom.
Yes, Ms. Hines. We plan at the building service level to alter the number of custodians that we have in terms of assigned to each elementary school. And so we submitted a plan to senior leadership where we know, for example, and I think this discussion came up with the board earlier, we know, for example, we have eight custodians at the high school level. The high school technically will remain virtual. So we will shift some people around to make sure we have the lunches covered and have people in there in terms of with our DZ7 and the spray bottles and all of that to make sure we're constantly wiping down and sanitizing and deep cleaning. And so we've already worked on that plan. We know exactly kind of how many people we can shift, the hours in terms of which they'll come in, in terms of how we can cover each pre-K and elementary school to where we have that additional support in there, particularly in the morning until normally most of our custodians, if you know anything about the schedule, come in at 2:00 or 3:00 anyway and they stay till 9:00. And so that, that allows them to do the deep cleaning and clean the buildings. But we'll make those adjustments. We'll meet with each principal so each principal will know exactly what's been assigned, who's been shifted, what time they'll come in and make sure we've got all that covered.
Okay. I'm excited for the kids to have lunch because it is some sense of normalcy. And when we talk about school, it's not just about the academics, it's about the kids being with other kids and that social piece that they have been missing. So my students that came back, we were able to put them in the cafeteria as well for our lunch shifts and they are so excited just to be, even if it's distanced, you know, but they get to sit and, you know, chit-chat and have that sense of normalcy. So I'm excited that we were able to figure that out. Thank you so much. And that's the only thing I had for you. So, Ms. Durin, good afternoon, good evening. It's nighttime now. Good evening.
Good evening.
Talking about the checklist, as we talk about, you know, having the staff do a checklist as far as if they're feeling ill, if they have symptoms, are we putting out a checklist for students and parents to say, if you have a fever, please don't come to school, stay virtual today, if you have this, please stay virtual? Is there anything going home to the parents so that they can kind of self-check before they come in as well?
I will defer to a colleague since that's a question about students. But I do, I believe that someone here can answer that.
Okay.
Yes, that information will be going out, Ms. Hines, regarding, regarding that. We're going to ask the parents to self-monitor, you know, every day before they send their kids to school. So that's something we would expect them to do.
Okay. That, thank you for that answer. Have we decided within these policies, what is our threshold for requiring quarantining of other students in our classrooms?
Yes. I can kind of start to talk about that and if I say something that doesn't sound right, guys, let me know. But I was a part of a meeting with the Health Department and so we've received guidance from them about when we should shut down classrooms or buildings as a result of positive tests. And regarding COVID tests, they indicated that if we have two in the same classroom, at that time, we would shut down a classroom, which means that those people would quarantine or, and isolate and stay out for 14 days.
Okay. Okay. Because, you know, I mean, I like to know what, what the expectation is and that it's, we do have something in place for that. So thank you, thank you so much. And I believe that is, that's it with Ms. Durin. And then Dean. Dean, it's good to see you. I jokingly call you our NASA station, you know, you're the, you're the staff crew. You give us the T-minus 30 seconds. So thank you, thank you for being there and doing that for us, but thank you for this plan. One of the things that has come up, I'm excited that we have additional devices because just this week with students coming back, I've had several students that have been using their personal laptops because their Chromebooks were disabled for whatever reason and that they weren't able to get them switched out and they came to school without their device, you know, their school-issued device. And so literally, they had a paperweight all day. So I'm excited to know that we have additional devices at the schools. So for whatever reason, that is there. My, my other issue or thing that has come up recently is, are, do you have a hotline with Verizon and Cox as far as technology outages and technology work that's going to be done in the neighborhoods? Because seemingly, one of those providers on the peninsula has started upgrading their devices and so we have blocks and neighborhoods of students that are out, not, you know, not because of their own choosing, but because they can't get there. So do you have a hotline with our internet providers now that we kind of know what work is being done? And so when students say their internet was out, we kind of know it was going to be out anyway?
Currently, I mean, it's, it's like a lot of companies, Cox Residential and Business is very, very segregated, right? They're very separate. But I can, I can take a look and see if we can get some inside information so we can have that information available, certainly.
Now that the weather's breaking, I have a feeling that they're going to be doing work in the neighborhoods and, you know, our student, we just need to make accommodations for those students that will be impacted because of a business choice, not because a choice of their own.
Absolutely.
Okay. All righty. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair. I yield.
And Ms. Hines, I do want to let you know that the self-monitoring information is in our reopening manual on the website.
Okay.
We'll also be sharing it with the families ahead of time also.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other question? Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Patillo. Thank you, Dr. Bracy and staff team for putting together such a comprehensive plan, especially following our decision to reopen. Quick question, and I might have missed it at the very beginning. Do we have the numbers, expected numbers of students to return? That are expected to return to school and do we have those numbers kind of by school available?
We don't have them officially because the final date for them will be the 19th. The principals, the elementary principals have been sharing numbers with us and the numbers vary from one school to another. For instance, on last Tuesday, when I met with the elementary principals, I can tell you that the return to in-person rate was very low at some of our schools and very high at other schools. And it's interesting that you brought that up because what I shared with the principals is that this will have an impact on how we provide instruction by school. Typically, we'd like to be very consistent across our division, but if we only have 100 students in one school and we have 400 in another, obviously, that's going to impact how many teachers are actually teaching in person and how many teachers are teaching virtually. So we hope to have that list finalized by the 19th as that will be the date that we need to give it to Transportation so we can report out at that time. And what I'm asking the principals to do is provide it by grade level for in-person and for hybrid and then to send a list of those students who have not, who they've not been able to contact because there are some families that we simply cannot reach. And not a lot, but there are those who are being non-responsive. So we're doing everything we can to try to touch every family that is registered within our schools.
Okay. Thank you. And Dr. Wayne, just to follow up on that question and regarding the return to school for those students returning, I know our policy before was to, once you make a decision, you're basically held to that decision for the remainder of the school year. So if you're in-person, you're in-person for the rest of the school year. Is there a exception for, for parents to change if they need to or is that kind of just set in stone?
Well, the policy mainly focuses on the in-person instruction. What we don't want is the fluctuation back and forth where a parent decides, well, I don't feel like taking you to school today, so I'm going to let you stay home and work virtually. And I'm just being very candid about that because this really determines how we utilize our staff and how we provide services at the schools for our students. Now, there will be cases, you know, where students have to be quarantined. So an in-person student might have to be virtual for a number of days if it so happens that, you know, they can't come to school. We have more flexibility with virtual learning. We have no flexibility with the in-person because that impacts transportation. We have no flexibility with the in-person because that impacts transportation. It impacts classrooms. And so as much as we want every child to be back in-person, that's a decision that we need parents to be very upfront about. And once they make that commitment, we hope that they will stay with it for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for the clarification. I know some parents have questions about that. So I appreciate the clarification there. And I think my last question, I don't know, it's a question about the mask. Who is that to? Dr. Simmons, probably, I think. Are we clarifying or specifying any further what type of mask? Like, does it have to be the mask that you wear behind your ears? Or some people were like the mask that you pull like from your neck up? I forgot what those are called, the gator necks or something like that. Are we specifying what type of mask will be appropriate for PPS?
Uh, board member Thomas, I think we've ordered basically kind of follow CDC guidelines. And so we've got adults, we've got KN95s, we've got N95s. We've got a variety in the warehouse. We've got face shields. We've got a variety.
Let me clarify then, Dr. Simmons. I know PPS, we're going to follow the CDC. I'm just saying like if a student or staff has their own PPE from home, are we allowing, like?
That goes to an administrative question.
Okay.
That type of question.
Okay. Who would that be? Thank you.
I guess that falls on me, Ms. Thomas. So with that, in following the guidelines that CDC has out there, it basically says that you have to have some form of face covering. It wasn't specified specifically to a standard. So if you do have the gators, that is something that you can use. You know, and Dr. James and I had a conversation about that as well because we knew as we got closer to returning that we wanted to make sure that we were in the guidelines with what was expected of us from the CDC. So right now, when you see that what we're requiring, we're requiring the face coverings.
Okay, and I thank you, Dr. Bracy. I did have, Dr. Nguyen, I forgot one question for you. This is my last question. Sorry, it's been a long day, so I had to write it down. I didn't not see, and I think I know the answer, but I want to clarify. Are we allowing on Wednesdays those deep cleaning days for teachers to stay virtual on the days that students won't be in class? And the reason I ask is, yeah, I just wanted to know, could teachers remain virtual that day if at all possible? I know the technology thing.
I can answer that question with that, Dr. Bracy question.
Okay, Dr. Bracy.
Well, the deep cleaning now, Mrs. Thomas, that's done every day. So as far as teachers not being in the buildings during that time, it would be just like any other day. I think what it came down to initially was we're still looking at Wednesday as our PD day. So with that, we still were asking the staff, the teachers to come to school because although that may be a professional development day at our secondary level, specifically high school, they're going to be involved in SOL testing. So we're going to have those, we're going to have students coming in. And we've looked at those Wednesdays as days that they can get the testing in because it won't conflict with our bus schedule because it won't affect the hybrid A, A day, B day on the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So that's why we're looking at that. So having teachers home on the Wednesday, it would be, you would still have somebody in the building. So that's why we said we would like everybody to continue to come. So the cleaning will get done after they leave like they do on every other day.
So Wednesdays will be a potential SOL day when it's not being used for PD day? Is that my, is that the right understanding?
Only for high school?
Only, yes, only for the high school.
And it won't impact the whole high school. It will be contingent upon the subject simply because we have a window. So it won't be every high school teacher. It depends upon the subject that's being offered on those days.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker then, Ms. Hines, and then Mr. Tillage.
I just have two questions concerning the public health hires. Will they be in place by March 20, what was it, March 29?
No, ma'am. They will not be employed by March the 29th, but the health department has told us that they would be in place by mid to late April.
Okay, so probably before the students come back?
Yes, ma'am.
And then my second question was about the breakfast protocol. I'm just curious as to the rationale for not using the cafeteria for breakfast as well? I don't know who can answer that.
I think that has more to do outside of the safety issue. I think it has more to do with students getting into class and not having that additional exposure, but also making maximum use of instructional time. And many of our schools were already having breakfast in the classrooms at the elementary level because it cuts down on the amount of time lost. But in this instance, it cuts down from students having to come into the building from home, go to the cafeteria, come to their classrooms. They were trying to limit as much activity as we can with the students.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines and Mr. Tillage.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas asked the question about Wednesdays. And I was, I'm just going to reiterate, I think that it should be a, you know, when we originally talked about the plan, we talked about Wednesdays being that day where we had a break from exposure, where we had a break and we had that moment to breathe. With saying that Wednesday is going to be a possible PD day when you're teaching, you know, in a hybrid model, that day is really needed for planning. That day is really needed for you, for as a teacher. I think it's needed for planning and to work with your colleagues. So I would, I'm going to advocate for a Wednesday off. And if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But it would be my wish that our teachers do have that day off on a Wednesday and that we do as little PD as possible with those teachers so that they can plan activities accordingly and so that they can work together as a team to do what it is that they need to do. I also want to ask about for the elementary schools, for those two, two and a half hours at the end of the day after virtual is dismissed and we have the kids in school, are we, what kind of activities are we planning after school? Because I would really like to see our teachers plan things that are off screen.
They're going to be planning regular instruction with the in-person students. What we've asked them to do is to take that time in the afternoon to continue to focus on reading and mathematics. As you know, at the elementary level, there are a certain number of minutes that are required for English, language arts, and for mathematics and for social studies and science. And because of the reduced schedule in the morning, we're having to limit that time to 30 to 45 minutes, whereas typically, the students would get 120 or 90 minutes. And so in the afternoons, we're asking the teachers or the principals to create a schedule, and it won't be just loose. They're going to have times assigned for those teachers to continue to work with students on reading and mathematics so that we can build some of those skills that students have not had the opportunity to work on this year. In addition to that, they will have the opportunity to work in small groups. We also have resources for our gifted students and for our students that we need to pull out or push into classes with. And so the afternoon will be instruction as usual since we are now having a full day for in-person students. But it also gives our virtual students an opportunity to continue to work on the assignments that they have for the day and perhaps get some small group instruction as well.
Right, because, you know, I just want to see kids be with teachers, not kids on a screen with the teacher.
Well, we hope, you know, the guidance that we're giving our schools is that we're not bringing kids in just to work on the computer. Part of what, you know, and I talked about this in the last meeting, part of what we have to understand is that this isn't just about instruction. It's about reintegrating our students into school. We have a number of students pre-K kindergarten, first grade, who've never been to school in an in-person learning environment. And these are our students who we have to work with on their stamina, their attention, the routines, helping them to learn classroom structure. And so it isn't just about reading, math, science, and social studies. I mean, there are a lot of social skills, emotional skills. And keep in mind that our students are going to feel different. And so there is a whole package that we look at when we're talking about the needs of our students. While we are very concerned about the loss of learning, we're more concerned about the loss of socialization and the fact that we have to re-acclimate them to a learning environment. And so that will be a time for us to focus on that.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is, I'm not sure who it goes to, so I'm just going to put it out there. If we do have a teacher that is put into quarantine, their leave, is that personal leave or is that administrative leave?
A teacher will need to use their sick leave when they are out. If they cannot work, they will need to use their sick leave.
Can I ask why? Why would it not be administrative leave?
Is that, I guess that's a finance question. We don't, we don't.
And the reason.
Point of order. Chairman Patillo, these questions, I mean, you know, there's a policy or procedure that the school system follows. And, you know, if she can't answer it now or whatever, allow them to, to, you know, research or, you know, just say why now?
And that's, thank you, thank you, Ms. Williams, for that because I'm not, I'm not pushing for an answer right this minute. I would just like clarity on that decision, on that, on that point.
Yeah, I was going to state that it's really not a point of order, but Ms. Dorn needs time to provide you information with that. And I'm sure that's something that she could do.
And let me just clarify that I understand the question, that you want to know why we're not paying teachers to stay home and not work? That's what you're asking?
Yes, if they are exposed and they have to quarantine because of exposure at school, what kind of leave are we, are we able to offer any leave other than them using their personal leave? As sick leave?
Okay.
Okay.
That may be a combined, because that costs money, but I understand what you're saying. But I'll talk to Mr. Falk about that and we'll get you an answer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to make sure because I think that would be a finance combination. Also, you may want to get information from legal on that as well. So if you can get the information and give that back to Ms. Hines, that'd be great. Thank you.
And Chair, Chair Patillo, regarding that, like you said, I think that would be like finance and legal and a legal issue because how are you signaling out COVID as an administrative pay issue versus what if I have the flu? So why am I not getting administrative pay for that? So I think we would run into a real issue doing that versus employees getting paid their sick leave. I don't know an employer right now that's paying or a school system that's paying administrative leave for COVID. Everyone is using their sick pay. So that would be a major legal issue.
Well, yeah, and I don't want to get into legalities here in the open meeting, but we do have a policy that's set. And I'm sure Ms. Dorn and with Mr. Falk and Adam can come up with the proper verbiage from Ms. Hines to answer the question in reference to that. Thank you so much, Mr. Tillage.
Yes, thank you, Chair. My first question is for Dr. Nguyen, while it's on the top of my head. For students that are going to remain virtual this school year, I know that kids that would be going in person full-time, well, full day in the afternoon, they'll be able to get more one-on-one direct help. For kids that are remaining virtual, is there, is there or can there be a way that those students could maybe have like a breakout session in the afternoon that could be, you know, optional for them to attend? That could maybe link them with a teacher in case they're looking for extra help in science or math or English?
Well, all the students are going to remain with their assigned teachers that they're with now. And keep in mind, we're doing virtual and hybrid instruction at the same time. So in the mornings, all virtual students can log into their teacher's classroom and receive instruction. And since they are remaining with their teachers as we've been very conscientious about making sure that students can do that, teachers can then coordinate any small group instruction or small group help that students might need if they need to work with their special education teacher, if they need to work with one of the instructional assistants, or even if there are teachers who work together and come up with a plan to address small groups of students. We're looking at ways to do that. Again, I would stress that it's going to be different from every building. You know, there will be teachers in some buildings who may not have a live instruction class. And in that particular building, there may be teachers who can work totally with virtual students. And I want to put that out there because I know that it will be a question when we go back in person and things look differently from one school to another. But every school's needs will be based upon the populations that they're serving and in the manner in which they're providing instruction to them. So we want to clear that right now that it may be possible. For instance, I can share with you right now, there's one school where we only have 50 students who are returning in person. We already know that that is a situation that would look very different from some of our other schools. And so we just want to be very conscientious about that. But the goal is that we're going to do everything we can to provide the highest quality of instruction that we can to every single student.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for that. And then I know that we've addressed this situation before in other meetings in regards to kids, students that might have IEPs or 504 plans. And I thank you, Dr. Bracy, for that answer today. Is there, can we just reiterate who parents may need to contact in case they want to set up the IEP appointments? So they, we have some students that, starting with parents, there are some students that are having difficulties, however, they don't have IEPs. And so which does not qualify them to attend in-person learning. So is there a contact for a parent to call so they can get set up for an IEP appointment or to talk about options on how they can better assist their child that's suffering during virtual learning?
Are these students who currently have an IEP?
No, ma'am.
So if they don't currently have an IEP, they're not eligible for those services because those services would come through the IEP. If they have concerns about their children, I would strongly suggest that they reach out, of course, to the principal, to their child's counselor, to the teacher. And any of those individuals should be responding to them promptly. If they are not receiving a response, they can always contact my office. I have parents who do that now. I'm not, I'm hoping that, you know, that they can make that point of contact with the school first because it is better to go directly to the school and to the principal. And principals are very accessible. I stress to them that they need to be, you know, returning calls to parents as soon as possible, especially now. But if they cannot reach the principal, we have parent liaisons, we have behavior interventionists, we have school counselors, and we have teachers, and we have other staff in the building. They can always send an email to the principal and they should get a response. But for those parents who are seeking additional assistance, that's one piece. If a child has a current IEP, the parent can request to hold an IEP meeting. And by law, that meeting must be held within 10 days.
Thank you. Like I said, I just want to put that out there again for a lot of parents that said they did not know the proper protocols on how to go about getting assistance for their kids. So thank you for that. Also, I want to thank Mrs. Durham for her presentation about the COVID dashboard and the contact tracing. I think that is a great thing to put in place, especially with us reopening school. And then I'm great, even more thrilled to hear about the partnership with the Portland Health Department to help put some security and peace of mind to our students, staff, and parents that things are being closely monitored. And, you know, they will be notified in a prompt manner in regards to any outbreaks if they are to occur. My last question is in regards to the questions that we received, the answers to today via email. Will these be made viewable to staff and staff throughout the division so that they can reference this for their own personal knowledge?
Yes, sir. We've already made that available to staff.
All right. And then in regards to the section in regards to transportation, it mentions the capacity of the buses. And in the answer, it mentions that PPS has already secured the waiver for school buses to have more kids. Now, I know that in a previous. Now, I know that in a previous meeting, um, we were told that it, the school board would be the ones to determine a waiver. And so I was just wondering if something might have changed from the Department of Education's stance or guidance on that?
No. When we, when we shared the plan, we we said to you at that time that if we come back and if there's a need for um, to have more students on the bus, then we would be, that will be something that would need to be included in our return to um, to the in-person. Now, we already have a, a situation that we can have more students on the bus than the twenty-two. If you have families that are coming out of the the same household, they can all sit on on one row. So that right there already gives you um, an an option above the the twenty-two. What we were saying, we were looking at what some of the other school divisions that we're we're doing, based on the need, based on the 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 lack of drivers, the number of buses that may be needed. And we we talked about this as well, that we may have to have a provision in place that will allow us to get, at least, we may need in some instances, two people per seat, as long as they're wearing their their face covering. So that's, that's what that was when we, when we talked about, we talked about that as being part of the approval plan.
Okay, just making sure, um, cuz I was just getting getting some clarity on that, on that statement. And my last question is in regards to, uh, are there any repercussions in place for students um, who refuse to wear a mask during the in-person school day? Um, how are we going to enforce that all students keep their mask on um, during school?
Well, the 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 face masks are are required in in order for them to attend school. That's something that we have to to reiterate to our parents, to make sure that they understand that as well. And, you know, the students, it's just like with um, any other incident in a school. If if they're not, if they're not in compliance, we'll ask them to put the mask on. If they continue to refuse, then there are consequences that will come along with that. So we will follow the, our regular chain of command that we do when when students are are not following the rules that are established.
Sounds good, thank you. And that was just a question in regards to a question that are popping up on Facebook. Um, you know, just letting parents know, you know, school division is taking measures um, for kids that, you know, may not wanna follow the rules, just like they would take during a regular school year.
Yes, sir. Wear the mask, Mr. Tilditch, then they they can't come to school.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks so much, uh, Dr. Whitaker.
Just um, briefly going back to the Wednesday issue for um, teachers having that Wednesday um, to not coming to the buildings. How are we going to, how is that gonna be resolved or handled? Is that, is that the administration or do we as a board need to to vote on that?
Oh, that 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 wouldn't be a board vote. Uh, Dr. Bracy would present uh, his recommendation uh, to us on, I guess, what he feels is best for the students and the teachers, uh, and how to make this learning, uh, this hybrid learning model work. Uh, but we we really don't not dictate the the day-to-day procedures.
All right. And just one other issue I I had, and it's not really a question, but um, as students are coming back into the building, um, they're gonna be in a mask, what, for about seven hours a day or so? And most of us, you know, we don't wear a mask that long. And so I think there, I don't know, there needs to be maybe some practice of having to wear a mask for long periods of time before they, before they come back. Because that's something that most of us are not even accustomed to. Um, especially the younger children, and that's just a thought that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe that, uh, Dr. Nguyen, if I'm not mistaken, isn't there something that they're doing? I know they don't wear masks during uh, feeding time, but also I think there's like some, a mask break or something like that they're working on.
Yes, they are working on mask breaks. And um, one of the things that we've encouraged them to do is when they, if they go outside for recess, to make sure that they can take a mask break, anytime that they're outdoors. Um, I can tell you though, that um, based upon some of the feedback from my colleagues in other school divisions, children are much more resilient with their masks than some of our adult peers. Um, it is unbelievable how they report that kids will sit all day long with their mask. And in some instances, they don't want to take them off. And so uh, we're very optimistic about that, but to your point, we will certainly be con- conscious cognizant of the fact that it is a hardship for even us to wear it, much less little kids.
And and with the the mask, I do wanna say this. I know um, Ms. Bala Hardy, when she heard me say that all students will have to wear the mask, I'm sure that um, an alarm went off um, with her. Now, we do have some, some sped students, some of our special education students that will not fall into that category because of the disability. So I I wanted to make sure that I clarified that point. Is anything else to that, Ms. Bala Hardy, or was that?
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Right on point, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bracy and staff, for the update. Uh, if there are no further questions on this agenda item, we'll now move to agenda item. Uh, seven point one was your monthly report.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, good evening again, um, Chairman Patillo and board members. This has been a great night of discussion and planning, and I just wanna spend a few moments to highlight some excellent ongoing work that we have in our division. First, I wanna highlight our fantastic team of so- school social workers. As you probably know from watching the social media, March seventh through the thirteenth was National School Social Work Week, and we're fortunate here in Portsmouth to have a wonderful school social work office that is dedicated to seeing our students and families be successful as possible during their time with us. Certainly, this work is critical during any school year, but definitely during this pandemic, this team has done a phenomenal job in its work with our families in need. So let us make sure that, if you haven't, let's thank our social workers for their work. The next item that I was gonna discuss, you know, we've already hit on it, and that's recognizing Miles Hunt for his um, uh, scholarship that he received. Uh, Miles, congratulations. I don't wanna, I don't need to go over that again, you've already responded, but just know that we are all proud of you. The board said that they were, but I wanna let you know that administration is as well. And I know your principal, Mr. Malachi, was very thrilled to send that that tweet out about you. So congratulations, and I know you will continue to do good things. Um, I also want to remind our families that um, Portsmouth Public Schools is partnering with United Healthcare to host a Zoom event, March twenty-fifth at six thirty. This is a fun event that will, and we will announce the winners of the Words of Wellness Poetry Contest that was launched earlier this month. And if you join this Zoom meeting, you're automatically entered for a twenty-five dollar gifts, gift card drawn from Chick-fil-A. So for more information, please visit our website at ppsk12.us. Finally, it's hard to believe, but spring break is coming up soon, April fifth through ninth. It's just a couple of weeks away. I hope all of our students and families enjoy this time together. And I hope our staff members find this time relaxing and rejuvenating as we prepare to start welcoming students back on Monday, April twelfth. With that, Chairman Patillo, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bracy, and I echo all that you stated as well in your report. Uh, the next agenda item is seven point two. It's cause for roll call vote. Before we do that, um, I wanted to give administration a chance to give a brief update, board members, because the uh, state found they sent their final numbers in as far as what would be sent as far as appropriation of funds. So I'm gonna ask that Mr. Falk could give a a brief update on the budget before we entertain a motion on that.
Okay, all right. Well, I I will go ahead and um, and start that off.
All right.
All right, so tonight, what you will see is our fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school board proposed budget for your consideration. This presentation tonight includes the latest revenue estimates that were passed by the General Assembly on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. We received the final state estimates on Wednesday of last week and have been incorporating these estimates into the budget that you will see tonight. Due to the action of the General Assembly, we had to make a few changes to the budget initiative that we presented to you back on February fourth, twenty twenty-one. So as we begin, I'll turn to our CFO, Mr. Theo Falk, and he will walk us through these updates to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school proposed budget.
Good evening again, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, school board members. Uh, thanks, Dr. Dr. Bracy. As Dr. Bracy mentioned, we have gotten the the final um, or the final General Assembly approved budget numbers. Uh, there's a lot of favorable information in those budget numbers. It's it's surprising because normally, we don't have them this early. So we're able to uh, make some plans based on General Assembly. They're not final until the governor signs the budget. But indications show that the governors pleased with what the General Assembly um, put together for this year. So on this slide, if you, if you see here, um, our FY twenty twenty-one budget was one hundred and sixty million dollars approximately. Uh, the proposed budget that we have for you before you tonight, um, for twenty-one, twenty-two is a hundred and sixty-eight point one million, uh, uh, a difference of eight point one million dollars. Uh, if you recall, on February fourth, we brought a lot of initiatives to you in regards to uh, a a salary increase, as well as additional instructional positions to enhance student achievement, um, as well as student support as we return to in-person learning. Um, we also look to add to our information uh, technology and instructional technology teams to support the numerous items of technology, as Dean mentioned earlier tonight, uh, as well as uh, trying to enhance our instructional programs and technology that we use for staff, students, and for the division as a whole. Um, these would allow us to address those priorities that were set forth by the school board and our stakeholders in the community, our parents and students. So we work diligently to balance this budget, uh, and have a budget of need at the same time. And so as we go forward in this presentation, you'll see the additions that we made. But what I wanted to say was, everything that was uh, included in our February fourth presentation is still included uh, in this budget. Next slide, please. Looking at our budgeted revenue sources, you will see that the total budget, the revenue is about a hundred and sixty-five point eight million dollars. Much of that money comes from state uh, funds, about fifty-three percent of it. Uh, the majority uh, state regular funds and then of eighty-eight point five million, and then also sixteen point nine million from state sales tax. As I told you in in other meetings, this is based on student, uh, this, the divisions ADM, the average daily membership of students. So if the ADM increases, we get more funding. As we know through the pandemic, our ADM has been, has decreased from what we estimated for this year to the FY twenty-one, twenty-two year. The estimate is about two hun- twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four students or a decrease of three hundred and ninety, or excuse me, three hundred and eighty-three students. So having said that, looking at our revenue outlook for twenty-one, twenty-two, with the new General Assembly approved budget, that state revenue was approx- is a, is projected to go up about four point nine million. Why, you ask? Uh, two reasons primarily. The first reason, as I talked about, school divisions have been losing students due to the pandemic. Uh, this, this state still included this no-loss funding uh, within their finalized General Assembly budget. For us, that amount um, amounts to about one point three million dollars um, in in FY twenty-one, twenty-two. The second reason is that the General Assembly, as has been widely reported, uh, included a five percent uh, raise for funded standards of quality positions uh, beginning on July first, twenty twenty-one. This five percent raise would have to be given over the two years of the biennium, as we talked about at the last meeting. That amount uh, totaled about three point two million dollars. So as you can see, those two items made up the majority of the four point nine million uh, that the state has given us in addition uh, in FY twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, also in this, in in this uh, estimate is the nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars in additional revenue that the city had told us they would give us preliminarily um, this year. So as a result, as we look at everything, we're projecting to have an increase of five point eight million dollars overall with the state and the local revenue increases right now as outlined on this slide. Um, and again, as we look at the revenue and the expenditures, I I had mentioned earlier that the expenditures were a hundred and sixty-eight point one million. Looking at this screen, you see that the revenue is about one sixty-five point eight. We have a a spending gap, or we have a revenue gap that we will, we will be asking the city to provide as we had uh, in our meeting earlier this month. And I'll get more detail in that in a few slides. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, uh, the major change in this proposal is a, is changing the raise percentage uh, because of the General Assembly's approved budget, including a five percent salary increase over the biennium effective January first, twenty twenty-one. Again, the state funding is only for SOQ positions. Uh, it does not cover anything out of SOQ, which would be what we would have to um, to fund from local dollars. Um, because of the feedback we received from the community, from our school board members, from our survey, everybody has said that a salary raise is is vital. One, because of the dedication of our employees during this pandemic, and also to continue for us to attract the best and brightest employees to, and continue PPS shining brighter together. Um, so in this budget, we included a four percent raise for all employees. Uh, the total cost of that raise is about five point five million. But it's, uh, we wanna highlight the importance of providing our employees with a salary raise because it can't be understated, underestimated. We gotta remain competitive in the employment marketplaces with the teacher shortages that are going on. And we gotta com- provide a competitive wage for our staff that will be vital to the continued success of our division. Um, and also to remain competitive with many of our other surrounding school districts who you've seen their proposals are in the four to five percent rate uh, for next year. So again, the total cost of this raise is about five point five million dollars, and that is the major change that we've included in this budget. Next slide, Dave. So to give a general fund recap in a summary, our proposed revenues are about a hundred and sixty-five point eight million dollars, and our proposed expenditures are about a hundred and sixty-eight point one million dollars for an additional funding request that we would have of the city of a, of two million, two hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, again, I reiterate, this budget represents a budget of need for our school division. And in order to continue our world-class education for the students of the City of Portsmouth, we we feel it's vital to request these funds, and we cannot fall behind any of our peers. And we must continue to provide adequate resources to our students, staff, and the community as a whole. Next slide. Just wanted to give the 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 school board and the public a look at all of our funds. Uh, all of our funds, the grand total of this budgeted, of this budget is two hundred and nineteen point two million dollars. You can see the the breakouts on the screen. It includes our general fund, our risk management fund, our textbook fund, cafeteria and grant funds. Uh, the the amounts here did not change from our original proposal. Um, so they're the same as our proposal in February fourth. And I just wanted to make sure everybody could see all of the funds that we manage uh, in in Portsmouth Public School. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. And 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 once again, uh, Mr. Falk, I wanna thank um, you and and our incredible budget team. You know, I wanna thank um, our finance committee um, for their um, support in 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 putting this this budget together. And, you know, I ju- I just hope that this is something that that we're, that we're able to do for our, for our staff because they're very deserving of it with the the hard work that they do. And as you mentioned, you know, I think in order for us to stay competitive, you know, this is something that we need to do along with as we move into the next, next fiscal year. It start looking at the compression that was, that was mentioned at the joint meeting with city council. So those are, that's how we wanna move forward as we start looking at um, our budget and our finances for the upcoming years. So with that, uh, board members and Reverend Patillo, Chair Patillo, that concludes this this report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bracy, and thank your team for their diligence uh, with the budget. Um, I I do wanna say that um, uh, for the, for the past, I know for me, for the past six years, uh, this board has always kept the uh, the needs of of salary increase for our teachers, the number one priority uh, for us. And I was happy to know that when you got the final results from the state, that your number one priority was raises for the teachers as well. Uh, the vision has many needs, but we know our number one asset are gonna be our teachers as well as our students. So thank you for uh, for doing that. Uh, just to reiterate, um, Just to reiterate, we're not asking the city for anything more than what we already asked for in our last presentation, but we're actually able to provide our teachers a bigger raise. And there's no school division in this area. And I'm willing to actually say in this state that's given a six percent raise in the last two years to their teacher staff. So thank you for your diligence with doing that. I did see Mr. Parent's hand and also I believe Ms. Thomas, I believe, or just Mr. Parent. Okay.
Yes, Mrs. Thomas and I, of course, are on the finance committee, and we have the opportunity to review all of the budget recommendations. And I know that I can say for her and myself that we are very happy as the school board finance committee to support and recommend that the board approve of this budget. And you are correct. Last year, we gave a two percent raise where other school divisions did not give a raise. Some gave bonuses. And so with the two percent and the four percent, we're probably, we're probably the only school division around this, the seven cities, or maybe in that state that gave will have given in the last two years a six percent raise. So I would like to move for approval of this budget. And I am very happy that we can, we can do this for our employees because they they're most deserving. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion for Mr. Parent for approval for the updated budget request in a second by Ms. Williams. I still want to open it up now for further discussion if board members have any more questions in reference to this budget. Ms. Schumate.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't know, it doesn't have to be answered right now, of course, but I do want to put out there that we have discussed taking another look at the step. So if if we could, and I know you stated that we had to take a look at maybe R F P for us to have someone to do to study, which I feel like we can kind of yield to a local university and see if they want to do that, you know, just for extra credit or whatever case may be, but be that as it may. How does that look? And again, doesn't have to be answered now. How does that look? Say we were to do that and we could possibly get that information back. I know it wouldn't be in enough time for us to kind of look at that this fiscal year, but how would that look moving forward? And you can feel free to tell me later as far as the step increase, because I know that's a huge issue that we've talked about in the past. And so I wanted to see with this extra funding, you know, how could we go about to do that in the near future? Again, you don't have to answer that right now, but I just want you guys to take a look at that and see how we can examine or reexamine the budget moving forward to see if we can implement something with our step increases. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schumate. And Dr. Bracy, I guess if you can start working with the finance committee and also let's start doing early work with N W B and procurement committee as far as what that would entail as far as the R F P if that's needed. I guess we can get a report from them and the work they've done on it at one of our next meetings after their meeting, and they'll be okay.
Yes, sir. Who would do that?
Ms. Schumate, with that advice, you had the request. Thank you so much. Were there any other questions or comments in reference to the budget? Or the motion on the floor at this time? All right, seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ms. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Office of Judiciary?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item seven point three, board member comments. Do we have any comments, further comments on tonight? All right, Ms. Schu- I'm sorry, Ms. Schumate, Ms. Hines, and Mr. Tillage.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. I'm going to make this very quick. Scholarship, I have a scholarship announcement for any parents that have seniors within Portsmouth Public Schools. Portsmouth Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has a scholarship opportunity, actually several. And so if you could, if you have a senior that is going into college in the fall, please visit PACDST.org slash backslash scholarships. And if you have any questions, feel free to email Ms. Von Lee at scholarship at PACDST.org. Please take a look at some of those scholarship opportunities. Also, excuse me, I am involved in Vaccinate Virginia. So if anyone out there need to be vaccinated, please feel free to either email me at Schumate, which is S H E W M A K E, the number four, Portsmouth at gmail dot com. I'm working with the governor's office to ensure that anyone who would like to be vaccinated that has not had the opportunity to be vaccinated, get vaccinated. So feel free to either inbox me on social media or send me an email with your first and last name, date of birth, and also a good contact number, because they will be in contact with you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Tamara, that's wonderful that you're able to work with the governor's office and get that out there. So thank you for being a part of that and making sure Portsmouth is represented there. With that being said, a few meetings ago, we did ask about working with the city, with our athletic department to figure out some some gen- I want to say M O U, but that's not, that's too formal. But with ball season picking up for both, you know, our high schools and our middle, well, our high schools and for our little leagues, have we been able to work with the Parks and Rec Department to come up with some sort of agreements, gentlemen's agreements or otherwise about facility usage and whose facility is what? And you can follow up with me that, follow up with us on that one later. The other one I have is for doctor or for Mr. Falk and the R F P for Churchland and for our rezoning. Where are we with that?
We have a deadline, I believe it's March thirtieth to get the proposals in. We have actually received a couple of proposals early. So we're just waiting for the proposals to come in. And then at that point, we can start the review process with committees and so on and so forth.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
I yield.
Thanks so much, Ms. Hines. Mr. Tillage.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity to participate in Read Across America Day at John Tyler with the first grade class, as well as to participate as a judge in the science fair at John Tyler with the sixth graders. And I want to thank Dr. Nguyen and her staff for the great job that they did to help bring some type of normalcy to our students in the science department. I think the kids really enjoyed being able to present, and some of them did, actually all of them did a very good job. I mean, there were some that their presentation was spectacular. Sixth graders being able to present without reading from a script, it was really impressive. And so I want to thank John Tyler, as well as Dr. Nguyen's staff for hosting such an event. I also want to bring attention, because this month is Women's History Month. And so, you know, throughout American history, women have been the impetus that has continued to push humanity forward on a path toward a more equitable and just society. And regardless of the many acts of discrimination and hardships that have been intentionally placed in front of women, women have remained steadfast and resilient through it all. And during the month of March, we would like to honor, well, I would like to honor the women, the long list of women who have blazed a path forward for the next generation. And especially here in the year twenty twenty one, where we've just inaugurated the first female president, Vice President, as well as here in the city of Portsmouth, we are home to the first ever female Senate President Pro Tem, Senator Eloise Lucas. And I would be remiss if I did not honor my fellow female school board members here on the Portsmouth School Board. And so to all the females, to all the women, I just want to salute you and thank you for all that you all have done to pave a way for the next generation of females.
Thank you so much. I echo your sentiments as well. Mr. Tillage. Dr. Whitaker?
Just real quick, given the change that the governor has made in terms of gatherings, will we be getting an update for graduation ceremonies?
Hopefully.
Yes, we 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 received that information earlier this week about the possibility that this, just waiting the governor's announcement. So Dr. Cromartie has already had began the dialogue with the high school principal. So we're just working with them to see what that will look like. But yes, that is in the works, Dr. Whitaker.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Sorry, it was on a different page that I had in front of me. Regarding the S A T schedule and the issue that we had with S A T and College Board and Churchland High School on Saturday, have we checked our schedules to make sure that our student, you know, that our facility is not listed on any other schedule for S A T board? Have we been able to figure out how many of our students were impacted by that? And is there anything, any, any, anything that we can do for those those students who may need that, for whatever reason? Have we been able to to try to negate that from happening again at our schools?
Mrs. Hines, Dr. Cromartie, I think he got kicked off, but we we did talk about that. We, the information that came out, we never should have been on the list anyway, because our facility was never one that was was open. And I think that was a mistake with College Board, because if you went to the actual website, it said that Churchland High School was closed. But what we are going to do, now that we're looking at coming back into in person, we will, we're willing to work with College Board in order to look at our site as a testing site. So but what happened at that that last Saturday was not, was not, was not a Portsmouth Public Schools hiccup. It was not on our part. I think it was the whatever communication that took place. And I don't even know how they were able to get an admission ticket for Churchland High School when they also showed that the facility is closed, which it was. So we're, Dr. Cromartie is in in contact with the College Board just to try to see exactly what needs to occur and how they're handling social distancing with some of the new, the upcoming administrations.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much, Ms. Hines. And I also want to echo Mr. Tillage. Many of us on the board were judges in the science fair at John Tyler, and we also read, and I was thoroughly impressed with the students and their presentations and the work they have put into their projects, doing it from home. So I definitely want to thank the administration at John Tyler, Ms. Meehan, who led the effort to do the science fair this year. And I believe they had about a hundred, well, more than a hundred students to prepare science fair projects for to be judged. So that was a great representation, and I want to thank them again for that. And I know I don't need a motion to adjourn this meeting with Ms. Hines. Do you want to give me a motion to adjourn on tonight?
Yes, Chairman, I move to adjourn this meeting, and I'll see you guys next time, hopefully in person.
All right, good night. Thank you all so much.
Good night. Stay safe, everyone.
Yes.